Thank you. I'm going to call this meeting tonight a Laramie City Council Regular Business Meeting to order. Let the record reflect it is Tuesday, December 20th, 2016, and the time is 6:30 PM. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'd all join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
...................................................................................................................................................
Honorable Mayor, City Council, one quick announcement to remind you that on Friday, the 23rd, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM is the Free Skate with Santa at the Laramie Island Event Center. From 5:00 to 6:00 is Photos with Santa. From 6:00 to 7:00 is Skating with Santa. And from 7:00 to 8:00 is more Photos with Santa. It's a free event by the Friends of Community Recreation Foundation, and any donations that we do receive will go towards the Laramie Recreation Scholarship Fund. So just wanted to remind everybody of Free Skate with Santa on Friday night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is disclosures by council members. Are there any items we'll be discussing tonight that would present a conflict of interest to council members? All right, moving on to item number seven. I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor.
So, we don't have any changes to the agenda this evening, so I move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Councilor Shumway. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
I move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hanson.
Weaver.
Weaver. All in favor, excuse me. City Clerk, would you do your call, please?
Hanson.
Yes, except on items F and G, no.
Henry, absent. Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville, absent. Vitale.
Yes.
That is seven yeses and two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Two nos.
Two yeses within the nos. I guess I'm not sure how to say that the right way.
Point of information, in the past, the clerk has simply said yes, and then two nos on the items stipulated.
Okay. I think we've got that clear now, so let's move on to our regular agenda. And our first item on the regular agenda is item number 10, and I'll turn it over to Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the United States Environmental Protection Agency for a community-wide brownfield assessment grant to support revitalization efforts in the West Side. Your Honor, I move to approve the filing of an application with the United States Environmental Protection Agency for a community brownfield assessment grant to support revitalization efforts in the West Side and authorize the Maryland Clerk to sign.
Second. Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Councilor Schuster, and I'll turn it over to our Grants Manager, Ms. Reese.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council. The purpose of the EPA Brownfield Assessment Program is to empower communities and stakeholders to work together to prevent, assess, safely clean up, and sustainably reuse brownfield sites. The EPA defines a brownfield site as a property for which the expansion, redevelopment, or reuse may be complicated by the presence or perceived presence of hazardous materials or other pollutants. So the purpose of this grant program is to take an inventory of potentially polluted sites, so it's just essentially a list of potentially polluted sites, to then characterize those sites, so a determination of what those sites are polluted with, and then an assessment of those sites, and that tells you what needs to happen in order to clean those sites. Then the last part of that program is to conduct community visioning sessions so that improvement plans for each site can be tailored to community identified and community-driven goals. So that's what the grant would fund. The focus of the project would be in our West Side. The beneficiaries of that project are the West Side residents, but frankly, the focus of this grant is on the outer perimeter of the West Side, with a particular focus on the north end of the West Side, where we have one, sort of, I guess I would define it as mid-remediation site, and then a couple other sites of concern, including the 85-acre Amoco site just across from the Midwest Refinery, which, of course, was funded, the demolition for which was funded by a CDBG award. The total amount, or the total request, is $300,000. Those funds would be, again, used to hire a consultant who would visit Laramie over a three-year period and really get to know the community, and really get to know our constituents and stakeholders. This grant does not require a cash match, but it does Laramie River Conservation District is right now in their project, but if they need more work to be done, this is certainly an excellent gateway for that to occur. Does that...
Any last question? The $300,000, how was that figure determined?
It was, I received that figure from a national consulting firm that works, that's headquartered in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and has offices in Cheyenne to serve the EPA Region 8. They gave me that estimate to help determine what the heck a three-year study of this size and nature would cost. This amount, incidentally, is the maximum that can be applied for through the EPA.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. In your description, the background description, I'm a little unclear on the last paragraph. The $300,000, which is a hefty sum, does it start any, or does it go to any actual remediation, or is it only for assessment of the different sites and conduct, it says, "conduct assessments of those sites, develop plans for remediation, and to conduct community outreach to keep the public informed," et cetera. What I'm unclear about is, for $300,000, we don't get any remediation done yet, do we?
No.
Do we have any clue as to what it might cost to actually remediate a site, or sites, or whatever?
Honorable Mayor, Council, this will answer that question. It will give a price tag and a work plan for each individual site included within this study that will be conducted over a three-year period. So what you will receive are a series of many assessments for each site, and within those assessments, a cost for, and a work plan for remediation.
Do we have any idea how many sites we have in town?
Again, we are looking just at the West Side, though, once this is awarded, should we need to shift that focus to an adjacent area, we certainly could. We're looking, I believe, at nine petroleum and five hazardous sites is what we believe can be accomplished through this with $300,000.
I'm just observing that I find that to be quite a hefty figure for, basically, a study, you know, or a recommendation. And somebody is making a heck of a lot of money here, or this is a very expensive process. I'm just unaware. I don't know.
Honorable Mayor, Council, I would assume that the EPA has a sense of how much these projects cost and would design their funding thresholds accordingly.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilor Weaver, and then Councilor Shumway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. First, along the lines of the last question asked by Councilor Hanson, I think the council's aware of, based on our previous experience with some projects over in this part of the community, there are some pretty complex environmental issues going back a number of decades here, and I think that lends itself to why the scope of this is perhaps seeming large and complicated. And I think that's because it is. I don't know the full history out there, but I know just in the last four years, when we talked about a few things out there for different projects the city's been looking at, there were a number of issues, and I think that's what lends itself to perhaps the scale of the project. Secondly, it's been brought to my attention from some of the community members that live there, that they would like some language inserted into the resolution, and I think it's well within the spirit of what we're trying to do here, so I'd ask the council to entertain this for a moment. And I would propose the following amendment. What would make this probably the easiest for all of us is if you just read the second paragraph, "whereas the governing body of the City of Laramie understands the purpose of this program is to empower communities and other stakeholders to work together to prevent, assess, safely clean up, and sustainably reuse brownfields." And, I'm proposing the following amendment, another whereas clause to be inserted after that second paragraph, which reads as follows. "Whereas to continue work in the spirit of these established purposes, Laramie citizens living in the West Side neighborhood will be given opportunities to provide feedback and meaningful input." And, and then the rest of the resolution would read as follows. I think that's well within our goals as established. I think it's something that our staff would make efforts to do in any case, but I think it has some merit to be inserted in the resolution, and that's an amendment that I now move to include.
Is there a second on that? Second by Councilor Vitale. Would you repeat that for one?
If you'll read it once.
Certainly. So, Council, after the paragraph that ends in "safely clean up and sustainably reuse brownfields," and, the amendment would read, "whereas to continue work in the spirit of these established purposes, Laramie citizens living in the West Side neighborhood will be given opportunities to provide feedback and meaningful input, comma, and."
Thank you.
And I guess I would just say, on that topic, I think we all kind of know where we're going with that type of amendment, and I bring that forward at the request of some of the citizens there. And I think it's something we would want to try to do anyway, but we can formalize it and memorialize it in the resolution. That's what I'd hope we would do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll go to Vice Mayor.
So, the last whereas mentions, working with the folks on the West Side and the different stakeholders in that area. So I'm a little confused, because I think in the spirit, your spirit, of what you're trying to say is also being said in that last whereas. Am I missing, am I missing a piece of what you said and what's already here?
Let me go to Ms. Reese for that question.
Certainly, the intention is that the entire community, but especially the West Side residents, working as standalone residents, and then through organized groups such as the West Side League of Neighbors, have a place at the table throughout this project. That's our intention here.
Thank you. Now, go to Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An attempt to answer that question. There's a couple of things there, and I agree with you, but there's a couple of things there. First, I think that is more of a generalized catch-all for how the process will work, whereas what I'm seeking to do is to define a specific goal within the entirety of the resolution, to say that this will be an important part of the entire process spelled out directly. And not every citizen that lives on the West Side necessarily identifies as a member of the West Side League of Neighbors, which is no discredit to that organization or what they try to do, but simply that this is a specific goal that we're establishing, that those citizens will be allowed and have multiple opportunities as the project moves forward. Maybe it seems extraneous, but I think I understand why the request was made, and I would hope that we could support it.
Thank you. Ms. Reese.
Honorable Mayor, Council, in anticipation of this, we drafted an additional line to this resolution that I'd like to read to you to see if this helps convey what you were conveying. It might not, though. So, the last line, we inserted one additional line saying, "if awarded, the city will ensure that a West Side League of Neighbors representatives serve on the consultant selection committee and any other committee relevant to the formation of this plan." That, of course, addresses the West Side League of Neighbors. Perhaps different, then.
Yeah. All right. Your Honor, just a quick follow-up after that, then, I think, because I, if I can.
Yeah, you're fine, Council Weaver.
All I want to communicate is that, I think, is acceptable language. I would just change West Side League of Neighbors to Citizens Living in the West Side Neighborhood, and I'd be happy to withdraw the previous amendment or substitute that amendment.
What do we got? Thank you. I'm going to...
Does everyone follow?
Who was the second?
It was Councilor Vitale.
So, right now, I think, Councilor Schuster, did you have something?
Yes, and basically, it's what you have been saying, as I wanted to, is the language on it was including it, a catch-all of the City of Laramie, and now we've made it more specific so that, besides the City of Laramie, that, yes, the specific group, which has a very vested interest in this, will be included and will be sitting at the table. So I just wanted to say that, yes, I would love to show support for that, and we'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Councilor Shumway.
This is not the first EPA cleanup in Laramie. In fact, it's not, in the West Side, in the area that's south of the West Side, towards the interstate, there was a cleanup that spent over a million dollars in the, where they had railroad tie treatment.
Yeah, Chris Oak.
That's, yeah, right, Chris Oak. And they're currently monitoring that, and it's, so far, has been very successful, but it's one that, most of that investment, or the cost of doing that, was paid for by grants and by EPA funds. So, you know, this initial study is to identify, to determine the need, and then to prepare for such a cleanup. But I'm confident that it's not going to be, you know, falling totally on the city when it comes time for that very expensive cleanup process.
Thank you. Councilor Vitale.
And I'll refer this to Councilor Shumway also, because I think he has a handle on it. Wasn't there also a cleanup shortly before or after annexation there where there was arsenic in water or something? That was a cleanup project, too?
Let me do this. We've got an amendment on the floor, which is, in essence, to insert that. Whereas, those are really good questions, and we'll get right to them as soon as we get this amendment off the floor. So, let me do one more thing, because I have a comment, I have a question, actually. Could you repeat that amendment specifically?
It's on Section 3 now, right?
Your Honor, I haven't been able to write, okay, thank you.
I gave up scribbling.
Are we doing Paul's, or are we doing hers?
Well, that's...
No, no. This is Paul's amendment that's on the floor right now, and I'm trying to get that off the floor, if we will vote on and get off the floor, and then get to the general discussion of this.
Can you read that chicken scratch, Angie?
Okay.
Your Honor, he suggested already a substitution, that he would agree to it, so...
There's an amendment on the floor.
Point of clarification, Your Honor. The language that our Grant Director had read to us, I think is perfectly acceptable language to substitute.
So you're withdrawing the amendment?
I was waiting to hear feedback from other council members, but I think it addresses what we're trying to get at, and it perhaps does it in a little bit more of a concise way than inserting another whereas clause, so...
Because if you are withdrawing the amendment, I don't have any comments. If you're not withdrawing the amendment, I would like to make in a comment.
He's changing the amendment.
He's changing it. He said that...
So what is the change of the amendment?
I'm suggesting that we use the language provided to us by Ms. Reese, changing West Side League of Neighbors to...
.......................................................................................... Excellent.
The amendment is to insert within the resolution, "whereas, if awarded, the city will ensure that citizens living in the West Side serve on the consultant selection committee and any other committee relevant to the formation of this plan."
Thank you. All right. My concern was, and I don't think it's a concern here, and I may go to the attorney for this. When we're talking brownfields and we're talking, this isn't a neighborhood, it's part of a neighborhood, but it's a community-wide issue, and there's an awful lot of people beyond the, a particular group, that have skin in the game, if you will. And I think the whereas, the last whereas on here addresses it very well, when it talks about the West Side League of Neighbors, yes, Lincoln County Community Center, yes, Laramie Main Street, yes, Laramie River Conservation District, and frankly, all the citizens in Laramie, Wyoming should have a say and be part of this. So this is where I'm, I just want to make sure we are including everybody and not getting too specific with a specific group, if you will. Now, having said that, I think what the amendment you're proposing is, and I'd like our attorney, is a little bit different, and all you're suggesting on that amendment is that a member of the West Side group be part of any kind of committee that's formed. They're different, in other words, is what I'm asking.
Mayor, and I apologize. Could I hear that amendment one more time?
No.
I have no opinion, then, Your Honor.
I'm looking, which you can read.
Your Honor, would you like me to?
Yes.
The amendment is to insert within the resolution, "whereas, if awarded, the city will ensure that a citizen living in the West Side serve on the consultant selection committee and any other committee relevant to the formation of this plan."
I think I'm fine with that. Thank you. After the third reading, I think I'm very fine with that. So, Council Weaver.
Your Honor, I don't think we have a disagreement now at this point, but I would just point out a couple of things from the cover sheet that I think make it somewhat more specifically tailored than what you were describing, and that is that some of the administrative policy goals that we're addressing with this project, if the grant is awarded, are the revitalization plan for West Laramie, and the investigation of the creation of an urban renewal agency is authorized by state law, which tend to be more specific to very precise areas, which is why I think that well-defined community representation is important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Council, to that, I just want to clarify that I spent some time with our community, with Derek, the other day. We looked at the budget to clarify the geographic scope of the West Laramie revitalization plan. The budget does make it clear that it's, that plan is intended for West Laramie, not including the West Side. But certainly, the health and welfare of the West Side has an impact on all of its neighbors. So I did want to clarify that, because I do know the League of Neighbors, so I had a question about that as well.
Okay, thank you. I think we're ready. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on the amendment? You'll have an opportunity to comment on the general motion as soon as we get the amendment off the floor. Doesn't appear so. So, having said that, I think all of the questions have been answered. I think we're ready to vote on the amendment.
Weaver.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Somerville, absent. Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Henry, absent. Hanson.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Plakis.
Yes.
That's seven yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor, two absent, Your Honor.
So we're back to the main motion. Councilor Vitale was making a point on the main motion, and I'll go back to Councilor Vitale out of courtesy to him.
Oh, it was just, I think, a historical point. We were talking about the EPA cleanup. I don't know if they were involved in that situation, Joe, in that water, West Side or West Laramie. I don't know which term to use there anymore, either. It used to be West Side.
Let me go to Councilor Shumway, and then I'll go to Councilor Schuster.
Well, anytime that there is a health and safety issue that comes up, the EPA gets involved. So they were involved. The solution to this actually went to the State Supreme Court, where there was, the discussion and the solution was formed there. So, but it was, it was a very serious health and safety issue for the Albany County, and then the solution to that was forcing annexation of the individuals in the West Laramie that needed to have protection with a safer water delivery and sewer delivery system for the community. This was in the 1950s, and I think the solution was in the early 60s, late, middle 60s.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Schuster.
On this, when we bring in the overpass off of Hardee Street, it's going to go into a section of the brownfield that had some asbestos issues, because I remember them closing the bike path about, I can't remember how many years ago it was, and it was closed until they could re-bury some asbestos coming through. Do we know how far this will be, and will they be remediating part of this situation when the overpass comes in?
Honorable Mayor, Council, I think that's a question... Honorable Mayor, counsel, I think that's a question best answered by Y-Dot.
Okay. Because they will be going into an area where we had asbestos issues, and bringing that in there, because their flags are out there right now, exactly where they will be removing ground and, and moving ground and everything like that. So, I was kind of curious about, if hopefully a little bit of this will get taken care of.
Given that that's funded by the federal government, I am certain they would have had to have gone through a pretty rigorous environmental review process, which would have identified that area and required improvements.
And I see they're going to finish demolishing the rest of the tank holders over there on the concrete, because that's where it'll also be dropped in. So, that'll be one eyesore that's finally gone.
All right. Counselor Shumway.
To that question, there's already been an assessment, by the way, of the Conservation District in that area that you're specifically talking about, where the landing is, and they, they have already been able to successfully move beyond what impact would be from landing the new overpass on Harney there. So, that's not going to be a serious impediment to getting the, the overpass dropped into there and then brought back to Snowy Range. So, I don't think that's going to be, Y-Dot has already satisfactory reached the part where they can now move forward. I won't, I don't think that'll hold anything up.
Okay. So, other comments on the study that we're doing? Counselor Weaver?
Yeah, I would just briefly want to thank the council for entertaining that, that amendment. I didn't mean to further complicate the issue. Sometimes that's what amendments do, but I appreciate the support there. I think it's important for the community members that live there to have that formalized and that, that representation guaranteed. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public wish to address counsel on this motion? And if you would identify yourself for the record.
My name is Wendy Chapman. I'm a resident of the West Side for 18 years now, and a, a member of the West Side League of Neighbors. My comments are that we want to thank Sarah Reese for contacting us and for giving us a presentation on this. We feel much better about it. We were a little, just, just didn't know what was, what was going to happen. We also appreciate that you all are interested in having input from the residents of the West Side. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to speak? Any further comments from counsel? City clerk? Roll call, please.
Weaver.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry, absent, Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville, absent, Pierce.
Yes.
Polikus.
Yes.
That is seven yeses, zero nos, and two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto item number 11. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Mayor, I move that counsel approved the grant agreement between the Department of State Parks and Cultural Resources and the City of Laramie, Wyoming Parks and Recreation Department for the award of a land and water conservation fund grant for Scout Park Phase Three development in the amount of $125,000, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second. Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Schuster.
Director Fieser. Honorable Mayor, city council, what you have before you is a standard grant agreement that comes from the state of Wyoming for the transfer of funds from Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund to the state for disbursement. Just to remind you that Phase Three was set to include an eight-foot walking path interior to the park, and two-to-five and five-to-12-year-old playground is what the application was for, and staff recommends approval of this grant agreement. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions? Counselor Vitale?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to support this, and I tell you, it goes against all the principles and all my previous successes in the parks and recreation profession, but I'm still pretty miffed about the $95,000 that this council approved to transfer from the Undine Park gazebo project, which we approved the gazebo's design, we approved the extra money to build it. It was all set to go. We had $11,000 grant from a friend of Undine Park. It basically was the, the seed for the community art program, and, and there's all the citizens, through all the years, that donated their time and their resources for that project, have been slapped in the face. I, I, I think it's disgraceful that we would take $95,000 to reward citizens that enriched this community from their personal resources and their personal time, so we could buy a pile of rocks. That's where the money was supposed to be transferred from. And I'm also a little bit miffed that the, and I know there was a transition of directors, but that the Parks, Tree, and Recreation Board didn't step up and fight to keep that money in. It was a fully funded project, everything was approved, all it had to do was put out for bid. It should have been completed, and it should have been used this summer. And I know there were some words of, of that discussion where they were going to put the money back in the second half of the biennium. I doubt if that will happen. I, I don't see the profile on this council changing enough that they will recognize them citizens, and they will move forward and reinstate that money and build that gazebo as a memorial to all the people that donated. I mean, that's what a community is made up of. It's citizens, and the amount of time they give back to the community, and it was, the rug was yanked right out from underneath them, and to me, based on all my experience in that profession, was a very disgraceful thing to do. So, I do hope, in my final words on it, that, that that money is reinstated, and that gazebo, as approved, gets built to honor all those citizens. All I have to say on that, Mayor.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I need a little clarification on the budgeting on this thing. I think it says there's $125,000 in grant. The project cost is $275. Then it says the city's amount is $150,000. That's clear to me, but there was some money allocated previously. I think it's $50,000. So, does that mean our current budget will have to come up with $100,000? Is that correct?
Honorable Chair, through you to Counselor Hanson, that's not correct, that you'll have to come up with the extra money. As it sits now, there was $275,000 allocated in the budget with a potential $50,000 grant application. The 50, the grant application was up to $125,000, so it's just a matter of matching and leveraging more of the available tax dollars towards this project.
I'm glad I asked the question, because I had it exactly backwards. Thank you.
Other, other comments or questions from counsel? Would anyone from the public wish to comment on this? City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Weaver.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Henry, absent, Hanson.
Yes.
Somerville, absent, Vitale.
No.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikus.
Yes.
That's six yeses, one no, and two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto item number 12. Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. The title of this is Original Ordinance Number 1959, rezoning an area approximately 26.5 acres in size, from AE Airport Enterprise District to AV Aviation District, generally located at the Laramie Regional Airport. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 1959 on first re-reading, rezoning in an area approximately 26.5 acres in size, from AE Airport Enterprise District to AV Aviation District, generally located at the Laramie Regional Airport, based on findings of fact and conclusions of law, and set a public hearing and a second reading for January 17, 2017.
Second. Thank you. There's a motion and a second by the vice mayor. City staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. As stated, this is an application for the rezoning of a portion of the Laramie Regional Airport, specifically an area that's currently being used for a private hangar area, as notated in your cover sheet. Currently, it is zoned AE or Airport Enterprise, which, as our code says, is typically supposed to be used for those accessory businesses that are associated with an airport, such as, you know, hotels and different types of businesses to accommodate the, the traveler. Currently, as I say, it is being used as a private airport area, or a private hangar portion of the airport, and it is closed to the public, so there is no public access. It is specifically for those people that do have a hangar and their own, you know, air shuttle, I suppose. That does fit more in line with the way that we define our aviation zone, which is to include those runways, clear zones, aprons, and other, you know, aviation-related structures, such as a private hangar. So, this request would rezone that portion from the Airport Enterprise to the Aviation District, which we just feel is a little bit more appropriate, as we've seen the airport grow and change. We do find it more appropriate to be zoned for that Aviation District for the current use that's being there. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer as well. There are representatives here from the airport.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver, and then Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How much of the current airport area falls under the Aviation District zoning?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and-
It's Aviation Enterprise. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, uh, current, under the aviation as opposed to-
Well, there's a, we're differentiating between Aviation Enterprise and Aviation, another designation-
Airport Enterprise versus Aviation, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, what is currently enterprise besides this hangar, proposed hangar?
Mr. Mayor and counsel, more or less, the Airport Enterprise areas are typically those areas that are open to the public. So-
Okay.
-the terminal and that type of area specifically is the Airport Enterprise. When the airport was annexed, it was more or less some little bit of guesswork on how they thought that the airport was going to grow and the different types of things that would be located in certain places. So, there are a few areas that we may see this, you know, come up in the future, maybe five or 10 years down the road, potentially. However, for the most part, the Airport Enterprise is typically those areas that are accessible to the public.
All right, and I, I appreciate that answer, and I think the reason I wanted to ask that question is, I mean, sometimes these, these zoning designations, I mean, that's, that's where the trouble arises or the solutions are found. So, you know, I appreciate that, and I'm supportive of this. I think it's practical, and will help some of the things that are trying to get done out there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. There is a, a drawing or a picture here. It doesn't say north, south, or so. So, I just wanted to know, in relation to the area that will be redesigned or should be redesigned according to your plan, where is the terminal building on this thing? Is that to the right on this picture?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and counsel, that is correct. North is directly at the top of the page.
Okay, so to the-
So, immediately to the east is the terminal.
Is that building? That little thing there that has dark spots, that's the parking lot, right?
I'm not sure.
Must be the parking lot.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay.
And this, this lengthy building that's there, is that the fire engines? Is that where the fire engines sit?
Are you referring to-
There's sort of a, in, in that, in that redesigned, to be redesigned area, there's a lengthy building, looks like a lengthy building. That must be the fire engines.
That's, that's actually, that's not a building. That's actually just a, a causeway.
Oh, is that what it is?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to, beginning to understand this thing, because, so which is the building that houses the private hangar? Is that at that right angle?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and counsel, I believe the private hangars are located along that causeway that you were speaking. I am not positive, however, the, the representatives would know, would have a better idea of generally where exactly the access is for those private hangars. However, I do believe that that turnoff that goes immediately north is that, you know, private area.
That private hangar.
Correct.
Okay. I, I, I must say, it's, it's a little hard to understand this, this map, and I tried to get through it, but I couldn't quite figure it out. Thank you.
Counselor Schuster.
Thank you very much. Um, not currently, but was representing for the airport for many, many years as liaison for that. And it's quite easy to describe this. Everything that is private and multiple hangars, not one, multiple hangars, will be on that side of the fence, no public access, and that's where we're trying to go. Everything that is outside the fence, including the terminal, the business park, and everything else, will be public access. Will meet all codes of the city. It's, it's pretty sweet and simple. I'm sure that if, if you would like to go out and take a tour, Klaus, they would show you exactly what the map means and where everything is, including fire trucks and everything. So, if you would like a tour, they would do that for you, I'm sure.
I shall do that.
Thank you. Counselor Shumway?
I don't think it's been mentioned, but one of the benefits of making this change is that once we go to aviation instead of enterprise, when buildings are put in by private people, there's also landscaping requirements, and many times landscaping includes trees and shrubs and things to attract birds that are, that are very hazardous to aviation. And so, by doing this, we are trying to make sure that there is additional safety at the airport for, by making this, this change. And so, again, that's just one of the reasons that I'm at current favoring this new, new change. I think it's important for us to keep up with what's best to manage the airport.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, there is a related item to what you just brought up coming up next, so we will be discussing that.
Okay.
Well, I think at this time, if, I know we have a couple of members of the airport board here. We also have the, the director of the airport operations here. If you'd like to speak, this would be a wonderful time, or if you'd like to just be available for questions, that would be great, too.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, along with, my name's Jack Skinner, I'm the airport manager. Along with me this evening is a couple of members of the airport board, Wes Bressler and Chet Lockard. Just to give you a little bit of a background, back in 2004, when we were annexed, and Eric covered it quite well, but there was two zones developed for the airport, the AV zone and the Airport Enterprise Zone, the AE zone. The AV zone was to cover runways, taxiways, safety areas, airport operations that took place, basically, I say inside the fence. Airport Enterprise was for development of, oh, like industrial parks, terminal buildings, those types of things that had public access. As far as the map, I can, I can try and point out some of the things on here that if you've got a copy of it, what, what you're looking at, Klaus, is, is, that's a taxi lane, and there, if you look on kind of the, the northwest side of that taxi lane, there's a row of 10 existing box hangars. And then on the other side of that taxi lane, there's, there's about four hangars on that side.
Okay.
And then further to the north, it's hard to see on this map, but there's another taxi lane that was built with FAA funds to accommodate future hangar development. So, you know, we're just trying to, you know, when we, it was an oversight on our part when we originally annexed and, and developed these zones, not to include this in the AV zone, so we're just trying to get up to snuff, I guess, on this. And we're available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Skinner?
Just one question. So, if this is rezoned, then there must be fencing somewhere so-
Yeah, there's-
-these folks can get their private planes onto the runway, right? Or how does-
Yeah, they have taxiway access. The fence basically follows this red line to- The fence basically follows this red line to, now, to the north, not the whole red line, but they already have airport access to the taxiways, runways, those types of things. There is an eight-foot security fence with a gate that has a keypad. Only people that can access have been approved by the airport.
So, no new fencing is needed for this?
No new fencing is required.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments by Counsel, and I'll open it up to the public. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Henry absent Hanson.
Yes.
Somerville absent Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Plekis.
Yes.
That's seven yeses, zero nos, and two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto item number 13, Counsel Schuster.
14. 13, you're absolutely correct, sorry. The title of this is Original Ordinance Number 1960, Amending Title 15 of the Laramie Municipal Code for the purposes of amending Chapter 15, Period 14, to alter the landscaping requirements for property zone AV Aviation. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 1960 on first reading as recommended by the Planning Commission that would amend Table 15 Point 14 Point 050 Dash 2 Dash landscaping requirements and create exemptions for the AV Aviation zoning district within the LMC 15 Dash 08 Dash 050 Dash 8 Dash 5 Dash H of the Unified Development Code based on findings of fact, conclusions of law, and set a public hearing and second reading for January 17, 2017.
Second.
Thank you. Motion of second by Counsel Shumway. Once again, city staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. So, this may be a little easier if you go ahead and pull up the Attachment A to see the two portions of this amendment that would be going into place. The first portion is within that table. As you can see, currently, the AV or the Aviation zoning district is within the same row as our limited manufacturing or industrial districts, as well as the Airport Enterprise District. This would create a new row and create the exemptions for the Aviation District. Now, if you go onto the second page lower on, within our landscaping exemption section, this would more or less, instead of viewing the Aviation Zone the same as we view all of our other zones within the city, which currently calculates the landscaping based upon the site perimeter, this would instead create the landscaping requirements to be 10 landscaping units for every 1,000 square feet of development area, which includes the building, parking, and other areas necessary that are going to be developed within the Aviation District. This also allows us to be somewhat flexible with the location of the landscaping that's going to be put into place. This would allow it to be located within other areas of the airport as opposed to being, needed to be put on the perimeter of, say, a hangar that's being developed. So, as Counselor Shumway mentioned previously, this would definitely increase potential safety at the airport and allow us to beautify the areas of the airport that we actually want to look good, such as those Airport Enterprise districts, and, you know, any hotel that may pop up out there, or any kind of, you know, area that the public is going to be in, as opposed to our private hangar areas and other areas that are located near where planes are going to be flying and landing and taking off, such as, you know, we don't want any unnecessary animals getting, you know, in the way that could potentially cause any sort of public safety issues. So, this does have staff report, and we do believe that it falls within the realm of the comprehensive plan for the purpose of public safety and avoiding any sort of unnecessary hazards that may go along with the landscaping. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, as well as the Airport Board is here, if you have any questions for them.
Counsel Schuster.
Just a comment. I like what's going on here. Anybody that does build a hangar will help contribute to the outside of the fence, not the inside of the fence, because like I said, there is a business park there. We do hope to have things built there, and so I think this will do nothing but help the exterior and attract businesses. So, very happy with it.
Thank you, Counselor, or Vice Mayor.
So, I'm in full support of this, but my question is more of a question related to how this motion was written. And with, using the words "recommended by the Planning Commission," I think that's new for us to put that in there, and sometime, you know, we see that in the documentation, but I just find that new, and maybe I haven't been paying attention, but is there a particular reason why we're including that in the motion? Or is it not new? I mean, I feel like it's new.
Mayor and Counsel, it's not new.
Okay.
What, I guess, what I would say is that if it is in there, you were simply notified now as the Counsel, that Planning Commission recommended what you see before you as approved, or as what they would think that you should approve.
It was voted on.
And that was voted on that way.
Right, and we always see that somewhere. I just don't ever remember seeing it right in the motion.
I'm pretty sure it's been in the motions. I can double, I'll double-check.
Okay.
I don't think it's detrimental to the motion as way it's written.
No, I don't either. I just-
So, yeah.
I don't remember it.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just wondering about, under AV, that it now says NA, which means not applicable. Shouldn't it say something like that? Because then it explains it and says refer to, because there's an asterisk on it, refers to 15 Point 08, et cetera. Shouldn't it say that up there, rather than not applicable, or something like that? I'm just confused, quite frankly.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, staff had a couple different ideas on the way to organize this, and we did believe that this is the most effective way, as opposed to referring to it in three or four different places. We did believe that because this is where all of the buffer yard and landscaping calculation requirements are located, is within this table, we did believe that the easiest way in order to communicate that something is different, as well as if you're looking for the Aviation Zone, you would still come to this table, would be to put something along the lines of the, you know, not applicable as the rest of the zoning districts are, and then refer to this, you know, different portion.
This new, and this new section only refers to the AV section, right?
That is correct.
The section D.
That is correct.
All right, thank you. It's just sort of coming in through the back door, this kind of thing, and it's a little complicated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by Counsel? Would anyone from the, either the Director or the, anyone from the Airport Board wish to comment? Mr. Skinner.
Honorable Mayor, members of the Counsel, just, when we talk about wildlife, the FAA invests a lot of money at these community airports, and just in the last five, 10 years, they've required that we take control of wildlife around airports. So, they've recently funded a wildlife study at our airport, which you guys signed the grant and helped us with some local match, but that study's complete. It was a wildlife hazard assessment. Out of that assessment comes a wildlife plan, which is currently being developed. With the plan, it will address things like vegetation and how to control wildlife around your airfield for the safety of the flying public. And we just appreciate your support on helping us with this landscaping issue, and we do want to do landscaping, just not inside the fence, and, you know, if you've been out there in the last few years, the parking lot and the landscaping that we did around the parking lots, you know, starting to look really good, and we're getting a lot of positive comments, so appreciate your support.
Thank you. Further comments by Counsel? Counsel Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one thing, I noticed for this change, we are charging somebody, I presume the Airport Board, $635? Is that what I'm reading correctly?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, that is correct. That is, the standard text amendment fee is $625, and a sign is required, which is an additional 10.
Seems kind of, we are just as interested in this change as everybody else. I find it kind of tough that we charge a fee for that, but I guess that's the way it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public wish to comment? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Somerville absent Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry absent Pierce.
Yes.
Plekis.
Yes.
That's seven yeses, zero nos, and two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Before we introduce item 14, is our city manager on the phone with us? Because I know that she wants to be available for this item. Nobody knows?
I believe, I believe she's listening.
Mayor, I'm here.
Okay, that's wonderful. I just wanted to make sure. Ms. Jordan, we may have trouble hearing you, or we may have trouble identifying you, so don't be afraid to interrupt if there's something you need to say, okay?
Right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Or text.
Or text. Anyway, so, next item on the agenda is item number 14, and I'll turn it over to Counsel Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a consideration of purchase and sale agreement between Real Resolutions LLC, a Wyoming Limited Liability Company, by and through its manager, Michael K. Shooty, and the city of Laramie, Wyoming. I move to approve purchase and sale agreement between Real Resolutions LLC, by and through its manager, Michael K. Shooty, and the city of Laramie, Wyoming, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counsel Shumway, and I'll, Acting City Manager?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, I just wanted to give a brief background. This project has been a long time running. I think we started in 2001, where we identified the facilities in Forest Street not being adequate, not of proper size, not storage. There were some conditions that weren't very good, especially in the fleet shop. So, we have been working on this. We tried to go for the SPT in 2009. The Council wanted to have some other projects pursued, and in 2012, the Council made it a goal to start really seeking funds and actually looking at potential sites for the Public Works Center. We, in 2015, the Director of Public Works and the City Manager started looking at potential sites. I think they came before Counsel. We finally found a site, and the city is now in the opportunity to have a purchase agreement for the property at North Third and 30th Street, the old Wyoming Institute Consolidations and Operations. It's roughly about 26.8 acres, 17 is on the campus site. We have another 9.8. We're looking at Sewer Lagoon. This project, this purchase agreement is $3 million. We're, once this, if this is adopted by Counsel tonight, we will then start pursuing heavily the financing options that need to happen. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to see if I can answer them and-
Questions, and then we'll go to comments. Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's correct, I guess, that originally Counsel envisioned 6.5 million or 6 and 1/2 million dollars for this project, right? So, we could accrue a saving here, right?
It's not a savings. This is only the land, and we're going to have to go into design and remodeling, and so the project will be between 6 to 8, depending if we do the parks, which wasn't really looked at at the point, but having parks moving there.
I thought that by doing it this way, we might save some money.
I think we probably did save money, because we were looking at a higher dollar amount, like, maybe close to 10, and we're like, this is not going to, this is definitely a savings to go into the land.
Next question, if I may, Your Honor.
Please do.
I see that the seller will retain two buildings, H and I, sort of in the back of this lot away from the highway. Does that in any way interfere with the operations? I don't know what would be back there. Would that, would they, these buildings require access through our division property?
We have a, no, there's access, we have proper access issues into the property, and I don't know what both buildings are, but one's just a storage shed, really kind of a big shed that wasn't really in our mind necessary. Those, they weren't things that we really thought was desirable to have, so.
Okay. So, it's our idea not to purchase these or whatever?
Yes.
Okay. Next question, one more, Your Honor, and then I'm done. The lagoon, of course, we are also purchasing, and the lagoon is being used for wastewater on, by several folks around there. Will we eventually run into trouble with that because of EPA groundwater regulations, et cetera? I'll be buying something that needs to, might have to be remediated in the future?
There's no problem with the lagoon. The, that, we are, they are supporting some of the neighbors. I think we're going to have to look at that option and maybe come up with some support for the local neighbors to have some utilization of those services out there, but it'll be different from what the new owner or the old owner has, but there's no, there's no problem with the lagoons.
Okay. I just didn't want to see us taking on something that might give us trouble in the future, but you say, no, there isn't.
Not to my knowledge.
Your word and God's ear. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Counsel Vitale.
Um, no, no question. I just had a comment.
Yeah, I'm waiting for comments.
Okay, you, so let's go to comments. You introduce the motion, so Counsel Vitale, and then I'll go to Counsel Schuster.
I just, I just want to say, I'll try and say it briefly. I want to uphold my reputation, but eight years on as Counsel, and I know there's been many years of exploring, you know, the new development of a Department of Public Service complex, and this project here probably is one of the most sensible, economical, practical, and any other adjective along that line, that I think I've had the pleasure being a part of. I think, you know, and I heard that we had maintenance people servicing our vehicles outside on a dirt parking lot under adverse weather conditions. I said, boy, this place is vulnerable for the Teamsters to come in. And I had never, never heard of such of unsafe working conditions as that. This project, once completed, will address that. It'll give our employees a safe, healthy work environment, plus it'll give us an environment for our vehicles, for storage, that will extend the life on them, and it also, I think, can be the anchor or catalyst for future development of North Third Street. I think in a Red Oak study, as I remember, North Third Street was one of the underdeveloped areas that we identified for infrastructure to go in, and that whole corridor, I think, could be attractive for business development there, as it ties in to the streets coming from the Cyrus Park, all the way from Ninth over to Third Street, which give us an east-west corridor. So, I, there's just so many healthy things, you know, just from service delivery, safety of employees, and economical. The sale of that fourth street, I hope the next Counsel will commit those- The sale of that Fourth Street, I hope the next council will commit those resources to roll over into this expense, so you can use one asset, uh, to acquire another asset and have a very minimum, uh, financial liability. So, um, uh, it'll be a pleasure supporting this.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster?
Uh, along the same lines that, once this project has happened, once our remodel is done, once we get into there, I hope that all the properties on Fourth Street then can be raised, is the term, when they tear something down anymore. And then those properties committed back to public lands, and if we need to put another softball diamond or Little League diamond or something like that, sure, that's great, but I wanna see this so that it can be sold, so it can pay for part of this project. And as long as that happens, yes, I am just fantastic support this. If we decide later that we're gonna try to stop keeping stuff, then I'm probably gonna start making some really vicious comments.
Thank you. Other comments by council on this proposed purchase? Would anyone from the public wish to address council? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry absent Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville absent Pierce.
Yes.
Poligus.
Yes.
That's seven yeses, zero nos, and two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. On to our next item. Which would be item number 15, Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. This item deals with a consideration of a purchase option, uh, for the city for some senior housing. I would like to move the, to approve purchase option agreement between the city of Laramie and Cornerstone Associates LLC for three to four acres parcel of land located on the westerly portion of Lot Four on Boulder Drive and south of the Laramie Recreation Center, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council will recall, uh, previous discussions in prior years with Cornerstone Associates LLC. They are a, uh, firm working in the Midwest that develops senior properties. Cornerstone currently has three properties in Wyoming, two located in Casper and one in Cheyenne. The project site is noted in your packet materials. The project site is unplotted, it is going to be one, uh, within the Turner Track and also the Aquifer Protection overlay districts. The development will expand on goals that the council have set forth in a number of your planning documents. The project upon completion would bring housing variety into the Turner Track area, also provide housing in close proximity to recreational amenities in the Turner Track, and also satisfy policy goals set forth in the Laramie Housing Plan, which council adopted, I believe, just a little more than a year ago. Noted in your packet also is a page excerpted from the housing plan that specifically addresses the need for senior housing in Laramie for low to moderate income seniors. Uh, this project would accomplish that outcome. We have appraised the property in question, um, and negotiated with Cornerstone for a price of $3.29 per square foot. That does represent a 10% reduction from the appraised value of the land in recognition of the fact that the Cornerstone project will provide housing to currently underserved populations in Laramie. I would note that you have Bobby Joe Lucas with you this evening, representing Cornerstone, and I'm not gonna talk about specifics of their project, because I think Bobby Joe will do a much better job of that. So, uh, council is amenable, I think Bobby Joe would like to address you.
Do we have, that, by the way, uh, Ms. Jordan, the, uh, the audio's pretty sketchy, it's, it's difficult to hear everything, so I'm not sure we, I'm not sure all councilors heard everything, but having said that, are there any direct questions for Ms. Jordan? And then I'll turn it over to, um, the applicant. Do we have any from council? Then I'll turn it over to the applicant, which is Ms. Lucas.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members, and Janine, thank you for welcoming me back. I know I've been here, uh, a couple of years prior, and we are approaching the city again to try and bring the affordable housing development for seniors to fruition. I've provided a brief, uh, PowerPoint presentation that we can go through. Is this? Okay. Uh, what we're proposing is a 48-unit senior independent living development, and we are going to be making application with the Wyoming Community Development Housing Authority, Wyoming Community Development Authority, for tax credits, home funds, and new for this year National Housing Trust Fund monies, uh, all of which provide, uh, financing sources, equity, and soft debt for the, uh, development of this property. For those of you who aren't familiar with, uh, Affordable Housing, Section 42 program, this is a, uh, IRS program that is managed through the Wyoming Community Development Authority. There is an application round once a year, it's a very competitive application, and so when we submit the application, which is due July 31st, we will know, we are optimistic on, in May's board meeting if the, uh, application will be funded. We are targeting the senior population, the information I'm providing is based on the 2016 market study. In the city of Laramie alone, there are roughly 18.2% or 3,860 households that are age 55 or better. Of those households, 21% or 821 of them are actually renters. This is an increase of 632 households from 2010. I was here in 2011, 2012, and so the, the increase is significant, and they are estimating that between 2016 and 2021, there will be an additional 491 households that will be entering the market. And these are households within the city of Laramie, there's no in-migration, this is truly the residents that are here. We've, our demand analysis determines the type of household, or the type of area median income that we're trying to target. We are trying to target residents at 30, 40, 50, and 60% of the area median income. The demand, as is indicated here, for 30% units, there are 45 one-bedroom and 61 two-bedroom units, and we're actually trying to capture only 1.9% of those residents. 40% units, the demand are 59 households that would qualify for one-bedroom, and 79 households for two-bedrooms. Our project would capture only 2.9% of that demand. 50% units, seven, there's a need for 76 one-bedroom, 103 two-bedroom, we're capturing 10.6 of that demand. And then 60% units, there's a need for 64 one-bedrooms and 86 two-bedrooms. We're only gonna capture 15.3% of that man, demand. So the total demand in our market al, analysis is 300 units, we're only proposing 48, and so the overall capture rate is only 16.8%, which is very minimal. Um, so we aren't even satisfying the need, the current need that you have, let alone forecasting for the future. The city of Laramie also has a housing study which recognized the need for affordable housing across all the income levels, and it also identifies the deficit. There's need for 294 new rental units, age 55 or better by 2020. This information came out of your market study, which, um, mirrors what we have. Mine has 300, yours has 294, they're pretty close. Um, again, we are trying to target seniors with an income between 35 and 60% of the area median income. You have to be age 55 or better in order to live in the facility. Generally, these are residents solely on social security or some form of a small retirement. They may earn, may or may not qualify for any form of assistance. But this project does not provide assistance. If the resident happens to have assistance that they, that comes with the housing authority, we will accept that, but this is not a, um, project-based type of housing. And many of these residents, as you know, may live just from paycheck to paycheck and cannot easily afford the higher market rate rents. Oops, I hit the wrong button, there we go. All right, and who qualifies? We took a look at the 2016 area median income, and for Albany County, it's 69,700. I'm trying to target tenants at... I can, I can provide you with the data for that.
Yeah, I would, 'cause we always show up much lower than that.
42, I thought it was 40.
Yeah, 42 or 45 typically.
That, that, I hate to tell you, that's Laramie County. That is the, uh...
Let's take a look here, bear with me just a second here. Albany County, the 2016 statistics from HUD are 69,700 for a four-person household in Albany County.
Must be both spouses working, going up $20,000.
And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to target residents, actually, WCDA, Wyoming Community Housing Development Authority, allows us to have a 5% spread between the rents that we're gonna charge and the income limits. So the rents that we're gonna charge for our tenants are at 30, 40, 50, and 60% of the area median income, but they allow us to use 35, 45, and 55% income qualifications. So even though we may only charge rents at a 30% level, they're allowed to earn up to 35% of that area median income. So that gives them a little bit more of a cushion, so that they aren't so restricted on the amount of income that they use to pay their rent. Uh, the chart here identifies anywhere from, uh, on a one-person, anywhere from 17,710 to 30,360. And a two-person household can earn anywhere between 20,230 and 34,680. And the rents that we are proposing, again, as I mentioned, our rents are gonna be set at the 30, 40, 50, and 60 rent limits. Rents on a one-bedroom, anywhere from 406 to 750, and on the two-bedrooms for 487 to 830. And I also wanna point out that these do include utilities, something that differentiates us from all of the other affordable housing credit projects within the city. Uh, all of those, the utilities are paid by the tenants. Ours are included in this particular number. The only thing that the tenant would be responsible for would be for, uh, phone, cable, internet.
Ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I always was told that one should spend not more than, whatever, 25% of your income on housing. Can you give us sort of an idea what these are at? You know, if you, if I look at 4, 406 for that first, uh, rent, how much is that of their income?
Uh, Mayor and council members, Nova Gratic and HUD puts out on an annual basis the rent and income limits for every county within the United States, and they're subject to change every May, every March of every year. And what they do is they've identified, again, what the area median income is for the county, and then based on those income limits, they've determined that it should be 30%.
30, those are 30%?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that was the figure I wanted to have.
Could you back up a screen, Klaus, it's right there, what the income would be? So right there is their income.
Yeah, the income is...
Yeah, no, I wanted to know what the rent was in percentage of their income.
Okay, so it's about 30%?
About 30%.
Okay.
But we're finding more often than not that seniors prefer to, uh, well, I shouldn't say prefer, generally, they're spending in upwards of 50 to 60% of their income to live in these market-rate apartments, only to have some form of, um, nice, sustainable housing. And so that's why we're proposing this development, which will bring that back down. And again, as I mentioned, it does include utilities on there.
It does include the utilities.
It does include utilities within that number.
So it's 30%?
Yeah.
I think Counselor Shumway had a question also.
Yes, sir.
My question is, this is based on four-person household, most seniors do not have four in their household, so it seems like it'd be more reasonable to say a two-person household, which would bring that number down, because I think, you know, the, uh...
Mayor and council members, this is based on a one-person and a two-person household. The 69,700 is based on a four-person household.
Okay.
At 50%, where these are, we've then scaled them back, because we can identify in our charts here how many people, how many residents will be living within the facility, and we've identified one-person and two-person households.
All right, so that's...
Those are adjusted.
Right, now as an example, a one-person, 50% unit, because, as I mentioned, a four-person household is 69,700, but a one-person household at a 50% unit is 2078, or I'm sorry, 25,300. See, I don't have any 50s here, I have 55 incomes. The rent is based on a 50% income, but they're allowed to earn an additional 5%. And this is on a one-person and a two-person. So if you look at a four-person, 50% household, you're taking that 69,700, dividing it by two, which would get you at, let's see here, 36,1. So this is truly just scaled back for one- and two-person households. And I'd be happy to provide you with a copy of the data. Um, this is HUD's data, and it's readily available, uh, to the public on the internet.
Counselor Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the, um, location being proposed. I think back in 2010, when you were first here, made a proposal, and I thought the land was east of the, um, LCCC, that also would be a cul-de-sac, was the original land that we proposed.
Yes, sir, it was.
And, um, and I think the original price was close to $5, uh, square foot. The application was made and it was denied, they could come back to us, we lowered that to just under four, or under $5. There was a re-application and that was denied. Then I think there was another, we lowered that, and then there was a third application, which was also denied. So now, we have the land is moved, which blocks direct center from any further, uh, growth to the, to the south. Takes away some potential, um, high-end retail space, in my estimation. And then the price of the land is down to $3.58, did I say? And almost a giveaway, so I, I'm, as much as I've heard from some seniors relative to, not being able to find a place, I also have talked to a couple of the, uh, people in town that have, are major renters. One, said probably has a complex, is some of the nicest place in town. Had 40 units set aside for seniors, and, uh, he had to take, I think, 20% of that 40 and rent them out to, uh, college students, primarily those that are on, um, graduates, and, uh, to get his occupancy rate to pay his bills. I, I'm, I, I guess I'm a little uncertain about a lot of these numbers and how we got from where we were to where we are with, uh, 'cause I think that location there, when we look at what we charge the school district, the square foot for the land, and, uh, you know, LCCC, I think they want land given to them to expand, so I, I... The Turner Track, I think, in the eyes of a lot of citizens, has been a failure in relationship to what the conditions of its donation was 50 years ago. Knowing times have changed, but that was, uh, so I, I'm, I'm a little skeptical, and I don't, I don't question there are some seniors out there that need some, what we call affordable housing, but, uh, not sure if this is the answer.
Okay, we're kinda, we're getting into a general discussion, which is great.
Okay, we're getting into a general discussion, which is great. I would just, you've got a presentation, is this a good time to start talking about these issues, or would you like to finish up on your slides?
Well, and I would be happy to answer and clarify some of his questions, if you don't mind, Mayor and Council.
No, please do.
We were back in 2011, we submitted an application for funding. The original agreement, the price was set at four dollars and eighty-seven, or four dollars and eighty-six cents per square foot. We did not receive funding in 2011, nor did we in 2012, when we reapplied, because at that current time, that's when all of the new student housing was getting built. And so WCDA viewed it as a high vacancy within the city of Laramie. There were, I don't remember how many units, one-hundred-and-sixty-some units that were just getting built, and so that's why it did not get funded. The third time that we submitted our application, we did receive funding. We went through the entire bid process, going through the city approval process here. That particular piece was in Crystal Court, Turner Tract. Turner Tract has its own architectural design and guidelines and requirements, which brought the costs of that development up significantly. In addition to that, the guidelines that WCDA imposed at the present time required a minimum of two and a half persons per unit to be eligible to live in the development. So that brought the development from a forty-eight unit down to a thirty-six unit. So you take a thirty-six unit project, in addition to the design guidelines and requirements that were imposed on us through Turner Tract, and the fact that our fixed costs are what they are, regardless of whether I build a thirty-six unit or a hundred units, it just made the project that it wasn't financially feasible. Our costs came in so far under budget because of that, that we felt the need to return our tax credits, because we did not feel that that would be a successful project based on all of those given restrictions. So when I approached Janine again, for two reasons. One, WCDA has made a change in 2016 with regard to their administration, and the guidelines that were imposed then at two and a half households per unit are no longer there. They're accepting the data within the market studies to determine the need for housing. Secondly, we moved out of the Turner Tract. This particular site is not in the Turner Tract. It does not have the covenants and guidelines and design requirements that the Turner Tract did. And so that will also bring our costs down. So that was one of the reasons that, in discussions with Janine, we felt that it would be beneficial to come back to the city and provide what we actually wanted to build, which was a forty-eight unit project. Based on the price being what it is now, what we're offering, that is the current appraisal. The appraisal back in 2011 valued that particular land at a higher price than what the land is currently valued at now, on the land that's just south of the rec center. And so based on all of those different factors, that's why we are back here and we are proposing a forty-eight unit on a different site.
Thank you.
Councilor Schuster, I know you have some...
I'm going to wait till the presentation's done.
Okay.
Thank you, and I will continue. Let's see here. The site location, again, as I had mentioned, it's, well, I didn't, the senior population is unique to its preferences, and generally, when we're choosing sites, we like to be within certain proximities, either within walking distance or within a mile or less than. And this particular site, which is just south of the rec center, we're not taking the front half that is fronting Boulder. In discussions with Janine, the city manager, we determined that it would be beneficial both for us and for the city to keep the part that's directly fronting Boulder, for whether you want it to be commercial, office space, or whatever you choose, we are very comfortable taking the back half of that particular site. This is a proposed design based on the requirements for the city of Laramie. They request that patios and balconies be on the development, so this is what we're proposing that it will look like. Again, proximities, we are less than point one from transportation off of Garfield and Grand, point one from the rec center, Laramie College, everyone's familiar with that area, the whole Turner Tract and all of that development. This is ideal for seniors, especially those who do not drive or choose not to, and they want to walk. So we still feel that, regardless of whether it was in Crystal Court or Boulder, it's a great location. And we, I believe Janine had given you a preliminary site plan, again, indicating that we are going to take the back half of that. And then we've also agreed that we will provide pathways. Evidently, there is a proposed plan at some point in time that the city of Laramie would like to have pedestrian walkways, and so through whatever portion it meets in our lot, we will be providing that as well. Amenities, onsite management and maintenance, this will have large common areas, which is a library and a dining room. We do not serve meals, it is just a dining room and a serving kitchen that residents can use for potlucks or whatever they choose. Mail is on the inside, elevators, covered porch and entry, a covered patio in the back, and twenty garages and off-street parking. What differentiates us from a lot of, well, all of the other apartments within here is they all have exterior entrances. This one's similar to atrium style or a hotel, you're walking into a main lobby, all interior hallways, secured access entries, so residents are, feel a sense of security being in that type of a development. Apartment amenities, Energy Star-rated appliances, everything's included. We are also providing washers and dryers so that each resident has their own. We felt that that was a great improvement that we offered the residents. Many years ago, they would bring in their own, and sometimes you have older equipment that fails, and so we found it beneficial going forward now, that we are just providing washers and dryers. Ceiling fans in every room, wall-to-wall carpet, window coverings, internet and cable hookups. Every room has a pull cord for emergency call systems, again, patios and balconies, and then storage units. Design guidelines, we will work with the city, even though we've provided an idea or a schematic of what we believe it would, what it will look like, we will work with the city if there are any modifications that we need to make. And economic development or impact to the city in the form of building permits, impact fees on the meters, any utility revenue, sales tax, job creation. We will have two full-time employees and ongoing service and maintenance that we will contract out with local service providers here. We believe that we are meeting or helping the city to meet their goal for providing affordable housing. We're excited to be back into the community again, and thank you for the opportunity to allow me to present this.
Thank you. Councilor Schuster?
Thank you. I understand a lot of what you're saying, because you're going to build a road to a backlot. Being someone that has rentals, what is on the front side rents for a lot more than what is on the backside. So I can see where everything has happened on this. Crystal Court was very expensive, because you wanted frontal property. So I understand that a great deal, where you are going to allow a business to be in front of yours, you're also going to allow us to provide a bike path, which is great over there, too. I'm sure that you will be doing all your construction on providing your small street to come up to your business, so I just wanted to comment those things, because a lot of times, that's what a lot of people have the questions on. Thank you.
Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Honored. Did I read somewhere in your description that there is uncovered and covered parking? Where would be the covered parking?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council, we will be offering twenty garages for residents who would like to rent a garage. Otherwise, the rest is surface parking.
Yeah, but where would that be?
I can bring back the picture.
I didn't see any garage building. Is it underneath?
No, the buildings, here we go. I don't have a pointer.
Yeah.
As you're pulling into the main drive...
Yeah.
To the right is a set of garages. To the right is a set of garages.
Oh, there?
Up, up, when you're pulling in the main drive...
Yeah?
Yeah, right there, that's a stack of garages there.
Oh, that's the garages.
Yeah, and then on the west side are a stack of garages, and on the south side are a stack of garages.
Those are covered garages.
Those are, yeah, absolutely.
Twenty of them.
Twenty.
Thank you.
Councilor Schumway?
The rates for these different units are determined, I think, through an agreement that you have with HUD, because of your tax credits that you're purchasing. When do those tax credits expire, and then does that, does that change the rental costs once that expires?
No, thank you, Mayor and Council members. This project will be, have an agreement with WCDA, in a land use agreement for a period of forty years, so the project will have to remain affordable for forty years. Now, again, as I mentioned, HUD has the opportunity to, or these rents are subject to change every year, whether they go up or whether they go down. I would say only twice in the fifteen years I've done this ever has it gone down, but generally HUD sets them, they may increase maybe sometimes two dollars within the next year. I mean, it's very minimal, the amount of increase that they make.
Depends on the median income.
It does.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. I assume there's an elevator in each building?
There's one building, and yes, there is an elevator.
Okay. And what, maybe I missed it, what's the ratio between one-bedrooms to two-bedrooms? Forty-eight units?
This is twenty-four and twenty-four.
Twenty-four each. What is your target numbers, as far as, you've got two bedrooms and one bedrooms, obviously one bedroom is one to two people. I assume the two bedrooms are two to four people?
Generally, how HUD defines a bedroom is, one bedroom can have one and a half persons, and so a two-bedroom unit is eligible to have three persons.
So, okay, what my concern is, is the broadness of the definition of senior citizens, and the broadness of what it seems like, from your standpoint, it makes a lot of sense to have as broad a market as you possibly can have, because it creates flexibility. From where I'm sitting, it makes sense to have as narrow a scope as you possibly can have, because frankly, we have some citizens that are desperate for affordable housing, and most of those citizens are the ones that are totally retired, on fixed incomes, have no other basis for income, and frankly, without some sort of assistance, can't afford housing, at least affordable housing. My concern is projects like this, starting at age fifty-five, has such a broad scope of people, that oftentimes, the real targeted people get left by the wayside, because they're scooped up by first-come, first-served. And if you could address that, that would be wonderful.
Sure. Mayor and Council members, I would like to point out that I'm pretty darn close to age fifty-five. I have no intentions of living in a property like this. The reason I say that is because generally, our average age is anywhere between sixty-three, sixty-four, up to seventy. Even at age sixty, everyone's very active. Most people still have their own homes and have no desire to move into an apartment complex like this. We're finding, more often than not, that it is the older, I would say, also more widowed people. Generally, it's women seem to be our higher occupants, because their spouse has passed on, and they don't want to take care of a home on their own, and all of the maintenance and everything that goes with it. But the average age is considerably higher than fifty-five. That happens to be an IRS guideline that identifies it, that's the definition of seniors is age fifty-five. But... I don't feel like a senior, and I don't, I honestly, well, don't have an intention of moving to that until a point where I need to. I know that maybe isn't an answer that you want to hear, but generally, it's the older, well-elderly, I should say.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
So just a point of clarification. So apparently HUD defines a household by four, and says our median income in Albany County is sixty-nine seven hundred, whereas the U.S. Census Bureau defines a household as a occupied housing unit, and our median income is at forty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-four.
Based on how many persons?
It doesn't, you know, it's an occupied unit. Census doesn't get down to...
Okay.
I'm not, I'm just saying, the federal government defines households in multiple ways, obviously, so...
Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, Honored. You had one chart up there, very much at the beginning, of the percentage of low-income people that you would be attracting. And the very low, I think you were only at, no, that was a percentage chart.
Let me find here.
Who qualifies, yeah, I think that's the chart. And if you look at the very, at the thirty percent, right, that's the lowest, you come up with only, I can only read it here, one point nine, and at the sixty percent, you come up at fifteen point three. So again, the ones who are cut out is the really very low folks. Where do we send those? Because you only have one point nine percent of those.
Right, we have, we have four units that are at thirty percent of the area median income.
Yeah.
And what we find is, if we don't receive enough subsidy in order to make the project greater volume of thirty percent units in this project, in order for it to cash flow, we have to offset the thirty percent units with the sixty percent units.
Sure, sure.
And the reason that we are able to put the thirty percent units in is the use of the National Housing Trust fund monies.
Yeah.
That is something that's new for all of the state agencies, for that matter, and that is targeted strictly to the extremely low, which are the thirty percent residents.
And I have no idea about the stratification in our city, whether we have a lot of people with thirty percent of median income.
It's identifying there that there is a need for a hundred and six units at thirty percent of the area median income.
Yeah. And you would be providing four?
Four.
Of a hundred and...
Of a hundred and six, yes.
Hundred and six, so we're down to a hundred and two. That's not...
What we find though...
I wish I'd seen more at that level, you know, see it a little more evenly spread, but I know you've got to make this thing cash flow, too.
Well, unless Council would like to donate the land, that would, that would absolutely reduce about five hundred thousand dollars of debt on there, which would allow us to provide more thirty percent units. So there's always an offset there.
I understand that, I understand that. It just occurs to me, you know, that the very low folks are still kind of...
Sure.
Short.
And that's, may I add also, though, that a lot of your thirty percent residents have the opportunity, and probably do at the current time, go to the housing authority and receive some sort of a subsidy voucher, which then is able to help them to qualify to pay a higher rent.
Okay, get it to the forty percent.
Yeah, but I do know that the waitlist for residents to receive additional vouchers, if you're not already on the list, the waitlist is well over a thousand, speaking to us, the Cheyenne Housing Authority administers those.
I get uncomfortable with these type of projects, and the reason I get uncomfortable is because the target group that we're trying to help, we help very few of them. I think Council Hanson pointed it out very accurately. And it gets filled in with people that, with not our target group. I mean, everybody needs help, okay, in some fashion, but if you identify a target group, and we've heard from senior citizens that come before us, and what I mean by senior citizens, are people that are on social security and nothing else, and they can't make ends meet, or they're trying to find housing that's affordable and somewhat, and somewhat livable, if you will, and it's just not available. And the two-bedroom, I mean, if you identify a two-bedroom versus a one-bedroom, the one-bedrooms are what we need, simply because of the fact that it's either one singular person that's struggling, because they have only one, one source of income, or it's a couple that's struggling. The need for a two-bedroom, it'd be great if you could afford it, but the bottom line is, what these, what these citizens are looking for is a place to live that's clean, that's habitable, that is modern in some capacity, so they're not paying a lot of money for utilities and so forth and so on. My concern is, we're not meeting that on this type of projects. You mentioned the land, we're giving a discount on the land. My attitude would be, I would rather give, I'd rather give the land away if, in fact, we could hit that... we could hit that target population. I'll use the example of garages. Garages are wonderful, but they're not a parking place for most people. Most people use garages to put their extra stuff in, and then they park on the side. If you really want to create a covered parking space for people, put a carport in, because they don't put storage stuff in a carport. And yet, it, it, it does the majority of benefit when it comes to parking a car. I, I get uncomfortable with it just because I think we feel good, but the bottom line is all said and done, we're really not helping the people that need the help. And my suspicion, or my inclination, is the people that really need the help in our community are our senior citizens, our sixty-fives, our seventy-year-olds, our seventy-five-year-olds, and so forth, that basically are not making ends meet. And these type of projects could help. You identified a hundred and six people. We've got forty-eight units here. My attitude would be, let's put those people in that thirty percent or forty percent income range in and help them with a project like this. And frankly, if we have to kick in more as a community or as a city, land-wise, I could feel good about that. But I'm kind of uncomfortable about what we're doing here.
Well, Mayor and Councilmembers, I apologize. We would be happy to discuss with the city any options in order to provide the lower-income housing. With regard to garages, that seems to be, that's customary of what we do. We have never built carports, but if that's something that the city is comfortable with, that absolutely cuts down on construction costs, total development costs, in order to provide just carports. And you are correct, most use them for storage. With regard to the comment in two bedrooms, two, two things I may point out. One, if you have a single person, such as my grandmother, my grandmother still chooses to have a two-bedroom unit because of either guests or overflow of excess stuff. Secondly, sometimes married couples, as they get older, live in separate bedrooms.
I saw it.
For, for many reasons, health or otherwise. Yes.
Counselor Shumway, did you have your hand up?
I did. I served on the board of Laramie Senior Housing, which is on Thirtieth and Garfield. They have a waiting list of about one to two individuals waiting to get in there because, frankly, their rates are much, much lower than what you're proposing here, but it's, subsidized housing as well as affordable housing. I'm not, my, my guess is that you're going to attract a group of people that really are not the same group as what goes to Laramie Senior Housing. You're gonna get one, those in the, in the fifty, sixty percent, where Laramie Senior Housing is thirty percent. They're, they're in the, the ones that can just barely afford to get into Laramie Senior Housing, and obviously, you have something that's much, much more attractive, and if they could afford to go there, they would go there, and then we would have a problem with Laramie Senior Housing. My, my initial feeling is you're not gonna be taking any, you know, their occupancy rate is almost always a hundred percent. I'm, I'm thinking that that'll probably remain the same because they are so much more affordable than what your proposal is, but we don't know that until after you open your doors and see if there becomes all of a sudden a huge vacancy there. But I, I like the idea of providing this attractive option for seniors, and for those that would go there, that would take advantage of the REC Center and all of the, you know, the things that are proposed here. You've done a good job of, of preparing this for us to have a visual. I know there's always concerns, but, you know, I, I had concerns that when they built the units that you were talking about in 2012, that they would not be occupied, that they would, they would become, you know, partially unoccupied because of what the university and others were doing, but they seem to have filled up. And so I'm sure that your proposal will be one that, you're familiar with the market and, and studies and things that you know that this will happen. I'm comfortable that if it's built, it will be occupied, and, you know, you have requirements to maintain it through HUD and through the, you know, the W, WDCA?
WCDA.
WCDA. So, you know, that's gonna be a, a great addition for this area. I, I don't have reservations saying that that's not a good, you know, location or a, or good use of the land. I know that there's still a proposal to put a school in, another school, a grade school in adjacent to that property. You have a church in behind, and then there's also other properties that can build up around it and in front of it. So, right now, I'm, I'm of the opinion that you have come forward with a good plan. We obviously could have some that would be, you know, more controversial. So at this point, I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster?
I realize everybody would love that everybody could be taken care of as a senior. Both sides of my house right now are senior citizens, and we're talking upper seventies, lower eighties. Very soon, they're gonna require assisted living, which this is not. And so I, it, it's great that they're independent, they both want to stay independent. I, I don't know how much longer it's gonna happen. I think this probably will fill in, I really do. We have to start somewhere. I realize that we're only gonna start with four on the thirty percent unit. Well, that's four more that are being helped. HUD has all their guidelines. It's, do we consider it fair every time? No, we don't. But it's a start.
It's a start.
If we don't do it, it's zero.
Yeah.
And not even those four are gonna be helped. So we, we have to make a decision, where do we start? And yes, I will be supporting this. It has good guidelines to it. I think there'll probably be a waiting list, just like the other one, that if one of the thirty percent units opens up, I think somebody will be grabbing it right away. And hopefully, they'll be grabbing a very nice unit. I mean, we're talking new appliances. Joked about it, I just had to replace a washing machine that was almost thirty years old this year, and I says, and joked about it, I says, "Think I'll get another thirty," and they go, "Oh, heavens, no. The new ones, you're lucky if you get ten." So I mean, it's, it's, they don't build them like they used to, but for probably five years, this is gonna be a fairly maintenance-free facility for their homeowners, and hopefully the, the management of this building says, "Well, when the washer goes out, we're responsible for putting it in." So I, I realize the internet doesn't come with it, the phone doesn't come with it, but I looked at their prices, it's, it's probably pretty good for utilities included. I'm not gonna say free utilities, they're never free, but for utilities included, I think it's probably a good price. So I, I will be supporting it. It's a start.
Thank you. Counselor Hanson?
One more, two more questions. You said fifty-five is the lower limit to get into the housing. In case you find you can't fill it, which I don't assume will happen because you've studied this, would you go lower than fifty-five to let people move into it?
Uh, no.
You can't, right?
We, we are, no, we are restricted by the IRS guidelines. The definition of a senior is age fifty-five or better.
And the next question is actually for building code. Three stories is the maximum that senior housing can be, and we have no restrictions. I guess you couldn't go higher. Do we have any building code restrictions on senior housing?
Mayor and Council, how, the, the height of the building doesn't depend upon the occupants of it, but certain things are required depending upon how high you go regarding elevators, fire escapes, certain types of windows, access for fire, for fire safety reasons, things like that, so. But all those things are considered through our building code review when the actual applicant comes through and submits for a building permit.
But there's nothing specific for senior housing, is there?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Any further comments by Council? Anyone from the public? Actually, just pretty much, the public is no longer here, so I think we're ready for a roll call.
Hanson?
Yes.
Henry Absent Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Somerville Absent Vitale?
No.
Weaver?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikis?
No.
That is five yeses, two noes, and two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Before we introduce the next item, why don't we take a five-minute break?